Welcome to the gallery and those online to our unscheduled council meeting. On behalf of the Swan Hill Rural City Council, I acknowledge the traditional custodians on the land on which we meet and pay our respects to their elders past and present. councillor McKay, could you read the preface?
We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Amen. Please be seated. All right, we have one apology from councillor Jeffrey. I'd motion that we accept those apologies. Thank you. Councillor McKay, second and councillor King, all in favour? Carry on, thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? I don't believe there should be any relation to this item. This being an unscheduled meeting of council, we have one item on the agenda, which is to receive and hear submissions to the proposed 2023-24 budget. Mr Pratap, over to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report is receiving and hearing the submissions to the proposed 2324 budget. Council advertised for the submission to its proposed budget 2324 annual budget in the Swan Hill Guardian and on 21st of April 2023 and the Robinvale Sentinel on 27th of April 2023. And online, let's talk, council's community platform, submissions were invited from 21st April 2023 to 19th May 2023. At the close of submission period, 12 submissions were received, 10 of which were public and two internal submissions. Four submitters, numbers one, two, nine and 10 requested to speak to their submission. Council now must formally receive here and then consider all submissions, consideration of the submissions we look at in the special council meeting to be held on Tuesday 6th of June 2023. 12 submissions were appended as a part of this report, Mr Mayor and councils, with the recommendation that the council, one, receive and hear submissions to the proposed 2324 annual budget. Number two, prepare responses to the submissions and table it at unscheduled meeting of the council for consideration on 6th of June 2023. As a report, Mr Mayor, the individual submissions are appended to my report. I will take that as read by the councillors. Happy to play questions, Mr Mayor.
Any questions in relation to the report Mr Pratap presented? No questions. I'll ask from the motion, thanks. Move councillor King, as per the recommendation?
Yes, per recommendation, yeah.
Seconded councillor Moore, thank you. Do you wish to speak to that illness councillor King?
No, I mean, it's what we're here for, is to hear the submissions to the budget and I thank the people that have taken the time to obviously peruse the budget in detail to make submissions and particularly to those that are here today to present to those submissions. So I look forward to hearing them so that we can then consider them before we bring the budget back to council meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
I'm like basically second councillor King's comments. This is an opportunity for the public to, and those who are passionate enough to actually read the budget and those who may be affected by it, to make public comment and give us a chance as councillors to hear their side of the story. Thank you.
Any other speakers? No other speakers. I'll put the motion, all in favour? Carry it. All right, now we can hear the submissions. Can I have a motion to suspend standing orders, councillors? Thank you councillor Young, second and councillor Moore, all in favour? Carry it. All right, okay, we have the submitters in a chamber. What will happen now is I'll get one of you, each one, I'll call you up one at a time, to talk to your submission. This is an opportunity for you to tell us firsthand what your concerns are in relation to the budget we've proposed. Councillors can ask any questions of you to clarify in our minds anything and then we'll get back there with them. There will be no response today. That will come back at a meeting on the 6th of June as Mr Pratap said. So the first one on the list is Mr Merrick, Andrew Merrick. Do you want to just come forward, Andrew?
Yeah, ours. Just stand on here.
Oh, you can sit down and stand, whatever you like, mate. Make yourself comfortable. As long as you're comfortable.
I won't take up too much of your time. I just reiterate my response about Tintin Football Network or the Alabamian Reserve scoreboard. And it was always proposed to be in this budget and it's not, so we're disappointed in that. And I'll just run through a bit of the timeframe. It was recommended in the 2017 Recreation Reserves Master Plan. And then since that came out, we've had some safety concerns about it. I, B and Ray and myself met with Evergreen in 2021 and that's when we were told that the money would be allocated to the 2324 budget. In our 2022 final, last year, a board fell from the scoreboard and did hit someone and there was a complaint made at that stage too. And then we've always been told that, yeah, this money's coming in the 2324 budget. And then when we went to look for it in the draft budget and it wasn't there, we've been told it's been pushed. We're just disappointed and if possible, we'd like to reinstate it into this budget. And that then we can start looking at applying for grants and topping that money up to get a good scoreboard there. That's all I've got to say.
Questions from councillors at all? Hey councillor King?
Just to refresh memories, Artie, the total project cost, proposed council contribution, proposed club contribution and obviously then a grant contribution, you?
Yeah, so we'd be looking at getting a scoreboard of roughly between $90,000 and $100,000. The, I think, council contribution is about $40,000. We'd be looking at bumping that up as much as we can with grants and then we would fulfil the rest as club contributions.
Okay, thank you.
There's a $25,000 grant at the moment available through SKIFs. So that's 40 plus 25 and then we could possibly look at dealing the rest.
Councillor Kelly?
Thanks for your submission, Andrew. Are you wanting one that's like the Swan Hill Footy Club one?
Yeah, yes, very similar, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the most modern kind of scoreboard possible and?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For that price range, you can get something similar to Swan Hills.
Yeah, and is that remotely controlled or?
Yeah, yeah. So Swan Hills has a physical connection, but Kahuna and a couple of other clubs now have the wireless connection, which reduces the costs. So you don't have the trenching and everything, so we'd probably look in that far.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, no other questions? Well, thanks Andrew, thanks for your time.
Thanks everyone, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, we have three other people speaking, but they're basically two people in three. Do you want to, which you're quite entitled to, I've got Brian Barry, you've put in a submission on your own, but you've also put in one on behalf of the VFF with Chris and Chris has put in her own one as well. Do you want to speak to the three in the audience? Would you just like to speak together and?
I've only got a relatively short one and Chris can come through with a lot.
And that'll sort of cover off all the, if you're happy with that, yeah, well, that's all right. You're up there, Brian. Brian Barry, thank you. And once again, feel free if you want to sit down, Brian, you don't have to stand up.
Okay. Greetings, Mr Mayor, councillors and other people. Thank you for allowing us to have our say. The largest industry in Swan Hill is agriculture. Most of the businesses in town are there to support our food producers. They include fuel suppliers, battery dealers, chemical and fertiliser retailers, vets, shared equipment manufacturers, sheroes, bunkers, bags, electricians, builders, later hire, employment agencies, equipment hires, cafes and restaurants, accountants, lawyers, concreteers, car dealers, estate agents, stock agents, freight companies, agronomists, panel leaders, auto lex, mechanics, retailers and all this goes on. These businesses are backed up by the various levels of government, schools, welfare agencies, police, hospitals, allied health and CFA and other service industries required to help keep our community going. But it all starts with farmers who need it to generate the wealth. Half our produce is exported to go in foreign currency for our country. The other half is used domestically for beer, bread, flour products and food grown to the dairy, poultry, pork, feed locally from land, beef, egg and culture, all your primary producers. In the last three years, we've had two awful crops and one good year in God. In that time, our cost of production has doubled more than any other investment. You say the value of our land has gone up by 60% in the last three years. That isn't entirely true. Some has gone up, but the poorer land values are unsellable. It is an unrealised asset. If I sell my land to take advantage of the higher land prices, then I can no longer farm. Higher land values do not make it rain. It does not give me higher grain prices. It makes no difference to the operation of my business at all. I cannot generate any more money. According to council's vision statement on a four core value disbalance, we will value and embrace diversity of our community and ensure that all people are treated equally. That's a great and noble sentiment. So why the persecuting minority group? It is patently unfair to whack us with a 20.8% rate rise next year. We can't even access most of the services you are providing because most of your money is spent in local miles on Swan Hill. Even travelling to Swan Hill is getting harder all the time due to lack of road maintenance in the dryland areas, particularly since the October floods earlier. Case in point, just outside Anais West and halfway to Chinkie, it's eight months now. They finally rip up a bit of bitumen down 20km down Anais West through the earthbends. So it's gravel now. Somebody's sprayed a bit of seal just on the edge of Anais West to fill in the potholes, but it hasn't been smoothed out. Eight months just to try and make the road passable. They still have 40km to run on. The main service that the dryland road players get from council is the maintenance of the rural road network. Even though you want us to pay 20.8% more rates next year, our roads are going to continue to get worse as their own financial performance indicates, as the chart shows. A 10% per year decline over the next three years in the asset renewal, upgrad expense volume. So we're going to pay more for the roads to get worse. We get to town to spend our money, we've got to pay the burden. That's not fair. We're not the only road users in rural areas. All our suppliers, technicians, school buses, emergency services, traders, council vehicles and families use these roads. They're even part of wildlife corridors. The roads are the arteries of the council's body. This year, council wants to raise an extra $1.37 million in rates in line with the state government's fair go rate cap. Is it a fair go to expect 448 families, no corporates, to pay 64% of this amount? When there are 12,231 valuable assessments in the council area, if the increase was spread fairly across the total number of assessments, it would only be $112.01 each. Instead, you are punishing a powerless minority group who can't even access most of your services. Thank you.
Any questions from the line councillors? Good. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you for your submission. It's great to hear from a farmer and especially about your experience of the roads. Does this type of potential cost to you ever encourage or kind of push farmers to seller? Or is that, are those days kind of passed?
I can't speak for everybody. It certainly adds to the burden that we're carrying. We, I can't remember going back on the numbers that were in the budget, but we're basically looking at two and a half percent of the council population paying 30 or 40, about 30% of the rates. Less than 1% of us getting extracted outside of town, problem with Anais on Hill. Whenever you're talking to people and to tight ear down the street or wherever, they know when there's a drought because the money's not coming in through the front door. We're the engine that drives the economy and there's only a small handful of us obviously getting badly treated in that we're just not getting services. We can't access, keep on going, shut the local pools, we're too far away as well. It's lovely having gardens and parks in town here, but it takes me an hour to get a look at it and then I have to go home. We, even our vehicles, we've all got a bloody name because of the fall of roads because we're just destroying vehicles on the roads that are out there. The cost to our business in repairs and wear and tear. We're creeping down roads now at 15, 18km an hour with machinery because it's just too rough, snapping on axle, blowing tyres. Our local road at home partly blocked for about four days because a guy was moving his air sector down there and get a couple of good bumps from the tyre. There was a head of ours on the side of the road, she's down a bit further, it's broken and actually during harvest just transporting down the road. Obviously, we had all the issues during the lead up to and after harvest, just trying to get into our paddocks because there's no rain, it's all runoff on the sides of the roads. So, yeah, we're being sold a little bit short of my business that I've got. The five households earning income off that staff I've got and what have you. I'm not a huge farmer. I spend three million bucks a year in town. Why are we getting penalised for trying to do our job, create employment, create foreign exchange? Yeah, as purely as the fairness thing. The, what is it, $1.37 million, you're slamming a 60 something percent of that rate increase on 400 people. That's fairly unjust. And we're the least likely people to use that access. I can't get meals on wheels. I don't want to get meals on wheels. But all our services are given by law. None of us out there are getting it and that goes the full way around. We're the most likely people to be volunteers for the CFA because we live out the end of the fires hour. Yeah, that's really quite upsetting seeing this come through. And at land, I was right in the middle of dropping. We were all overtired, over emotional, trying to get our job done, of my schooling, everything, it wasn't raining, so on and so forth. So it's been a pretty tense time trying to just organise something. I'm not sure how many replies we had to our, how many petitions that we just sent in on text messages because everyone's flayed up during April and May on the land. But everyone you talked to is just disgusted by what's been written on us basically. And, yeah, we are a minority. There's only 400 of us in the council area and we're providing so much for the drive and the money to produce things, I think.
Thanks, Brian. I'm glad it rained too. Glad it rained.
So are we.
Are you compassionate over there, Chris?
I am a bit, yes.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, just had a thing from our technical people. This'll help you later, Chris. If you would like to have a seat over there, the microphone will pick up what you're saying a bit better as well.
Oh, no.
But the people that are listening?
Oh, okay. But I'll move. I'll move up.
That's all right, Chris, you won't bite. We've fed him lunch.
Sorry?
We've fed him lunch, he won't bite. Have you some of this?
Thank you.
And you don't have to wave anything or anything. You can just sit there, have the microphone and pick it up.
Thank you.
All right, the floor is yours, Chris. Over to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Christine Plante, grain grower at Manangatang. So I put in a submission on behalf of the VFF Manangatang branch, so Victorian Farmers Federation, Manangatang branch. I'm a grains councillor for the Northern Malley and I also put in my own submission. So thank you very much for the opportunity to address this council meeting to try and get an understanding of why the dryland farming rates have escalated so quickly. Last Friday, I met with Barn and Ash Free, finance manager, and Vicky. And I can't remember what your title was.
Vicky Taylor, she's the rates manager.
Rates manager, yeah. So they basically, and tell me if I don't have this right, Ash, but they explained that the increase in rates is based on the valuation, but it's higher in the dryland category basically because there are less assessments in this category. So it means that every farmer is paying a greater share of the increase. So as Brian mentioned, basically we're penalised due to the lower number of farmers and that's not going to increase moving forward. The number of farmers isn't going to increase, the number of farmer assessments. So Ash was asked to find out some information, so he came back to me with an estimate that there are about 448 farming businesses. So as Brian mentioned, this $880,000 increase in the dryland section will be borne by those 448 farming families. So no corporates out in the dryland areas. So it's nearly $2,000 each, which doesn't sound like a lot. But the problem is that it has a cumulative effect. So for example, if a farm was paying $30,000 in 21, 22, if you add in the increases for the last three years, they'd now be paying $43,000. So that's just, that's a $13,000 increase in three years. And if you, I thought an interesting exercise would be to say assume an increase of 10% a year. And if you keep adding in an increase of 10% per year, in nine years, we'd be paying just over $100,000. Now, we're just small families. Our farm supports my husband and myself and son and his wife. So we're just a small family business. So that's one of the concerns, that every time you get such a large rise, then the next year, if there's another rise, it starts from that high figure and goes up and then up and then up. So that's one of the concerns that I'd like to bring up. So if that, if that $880,000 was divided just amongst the Swan Hill residential area, then their increase is $118. So you can see that the more that rise is spread over, the number of assessments, the lower it is. So because there's only a smaller number of dryland farmers, that's why our rates are going up so high. Apparently, this increase of 20.8% is the highest increase in the state and it's 5.9 times the fair go rate cap that the government have introduced. I went on to the website of other councils to see what their rate rises were. So Bullock, their farming valuations increased by 41%, but those rates are only increasing by 3.5%. The residential valuations went up nearly 24%. Their rates are going up 3.5%. The commercial industrial valuations went up just over 7%. Their rates are going up 3.47%. So their rates are spread over the whole municipality because if I just read out those increases, 3.5, 3.51 and 3.47, they're fairly consistent across the board. And Mildura and Ganawara were actually fairly similar. Ganawara, residential 3.8%, commercial 3.7%, irrigated farmland 3.6%, dryland farming 3.6%. So they're a lot more consistent across the board. Mildura was the same. I won't read out those figures, but I'll leave you with my notes. In the Swan Hill Revenue and Rating Plan, it says council applies rating differentials based on the concept that different property categories should pay a fair and equitable contribution, taking into account the benefits those properties derive from the local community. So we've got no problem paying our share of rates. It's like death and taxes. You've got to pay rates, but, you know, we're wondering why. Um, you've got to pay rates, um, but you know, we're wondering why. Why our rates have gone up so high, twenty point eight percent in one year and nearly um forty percent over three years. That um seems like a lot. Um, the commercial property differential rate is a hundred and thirty percent of the general rate. And it's to help reflect the higher level of services and infrastructure to commercial properties in the serviced area of Swan Hill. But the dryland farming differential at the moment's eighty percent is to help reflect the increased difficulty in accessing the full range of council services that dryland farming properties face. The disproportionate increase in property values over the last number of years. And the risk of seasonal income variations that are confronted by, um, that are not confronted by other property types. So, they're already talking, El Nino, hopefully they're not right, but as Brian explained, our um. Our incomes can go up and down and unfortunately, there's no link between a high valuation and rain, I wish there was, but. Um, not so. It also says in the Revenue and Rating Plan, property rates will not usually change dramatically from one year to the next. Um, but I would put to you that a change of twenty point eight percent and sixty point eight percent over three years is a dramatic change. Um, the rate cap increase over this three year period was six point seven six. So, the, our increase is five point eight times the rate cap in that three year period. The residential increase was five point seven, so this is over three years. The residential increase was five point seven, commercial five point five, industrial minus five point five. Irrigated farmland minus one, and we're thirty nine point eight or whatever. So, you know, there's no consistency there um across the board. Brian mentioned the um, the spend going into small towns, less than one percent of the new and ongoing major projects listed in the draft budget for the smaller towns of the community. So, ninety nine percent of the spend is in Robben Vale and Swan Hill, one percent is in the smaller towns. The rate increase is twenty point eight percent in the smaller towns for the, for the farming community. Um, roads, yes, we acknowledge there's a big road network to be maintained and yes, we do use them the most. Um, but as Brian explained, um, our produce gets trucked out on the roads. Fifty percent approximately, depending on year to year, is for domestic use. If it's a dry or drought year, nearly a hundred percent is used for um human consumption and stock feed. So, if you like um bacon and eggs with a nice coffee or chicken parm or roast lamb or pork washed down with a beer. Um, there's a fair chance you're reading a product that's been manufactured or processed with produce grown out of the Malley. So, directly or indirectly, the six and a half million people that live in our state are also using those roads. Because our produce gets trucked out, feeds up pigs or dairy, cattle or whatever, and then we get all that. We then go to the supermarket or to a cafe and we buy that produce back. So, yes, we use the roads daily because we live there, but indirectly, everybody uses those roads. Because we're providing food um for the state, not only for our state, but for other countries as well. So, to sum up, the dryland rate rise for both one and three years are significantly higher than all other categories. And nearly six times the fair go rate cap. Farming families pay more due to the low population, not our fault. The dryland rate increase is the highest in the state and significantly higher than neighbouring councils. Less than one percent of the council budget for new and ongoing projects are spent in small towns. And I guess my question is, should other categories pay more to reflect easier access to facilities and services? If you live in Swan Hill, you can go to the, the dog park, the heated pool, only five minutes down the road. But we, we do have access to those services, but in reality, um, we don't use them as townspeople do. Um, thank you for your time and considering um our submissions.
Any questions at all for Christine, Council King?
Thank you, thanks Christine, very well presented and um lots of information in there, too much to, too much to get down. But um uh your, your submissions in there are agenda anyway, with, with, there's extra information you've put in there. With all the negatives, how do you explain the substantial rise in dryland property values? Because obviously, the property valuations come into the whole equation regarding, um, regarding rating. Um, and dryland properties already have a, a discount built into re- um residential properties. Um, so it's probably more of a general question as opposed to specifically for this.
Yeah.
How do you explain it?
Okay, so.
Because it's significant.
Yeah, it, it, it is. Um, so unfortunately with farming, we need the land. Um, and to get economies of scale so that we can manage our um costs, we need to have more land. And there, there's a saying, they're not making any more of it. So, say with a home in Swan Hill, you know, if, if, if you can't afford that one, you might be able to afford a cheaper one. But with land, if land comes up next door, um unfortunately, there's a lot of people that, that want it. And they're not making any more, and so in this day and age, you've got to be prepared to, to pay a higher price. And um you, you can just imagine what the debt is that some farmers are, are, are carrying. Um, to, to pay for that land. Because if you do the sums, um, you know, a block was seven hundred acres and that, say. For ease of calculation, um, a thousand dollars an acre, well that's seven hundred thousand, two hundred. Uh, two thousand an acre is one point four million plus your stamp duty and, and costs. So, a lot of farmers are carrying a lot of debt. Um, and you hope that in twenty five years, you, you can, you can pay for that, yeah. So, it's, it's basically just because.
Supply and demand.
There's no supply, there's a lot of demand um to get economies of scale.
In fairness, Barry, I'll let you answer that question as well, right, you want to stand up, you come up to the front, sit next, sit next to Christine, you're too tall for the box line, sit down.
Don't pinch my practice.
They wouldn't work, Brian.
Give you the opportunity to answer that same question, Brian, in fairness, Mike, no.
The, the other, the other leading factor of the rate rise going up is that finance has been freed up so much. So, very low interest rates for the last ten, twelve years.
Yep.
Um, I know when I bought the first block of land in about ninety three, I had to have fifty percent collateral straight up front. Now, that's no ending here, so finance has been freed up a huge amount the last twenty five years. Um, and that's flowed through as well. Um. And that, that, that's probably the main reason, their productivity hasn't changed a heck of a lot. Because we've had a run of very dry years, probably the last twenty years, I think in rainfall grew twenty to thirty percent. But with the method, method we're using, we're able to optimise the rainfall we get. Um, and fine tune things during the season, so we're, we've got a lot better in our job and. Basically, everybody farming now are professional and they um, oh very professional about the way they're going about it. So, that's, that's my thought as well.
Yep.
And you have good economies of scale.
Thank you.
There certainly wouldn't be many, there'd be a lot of people farming that certainly wouldn't be able to pay those big prices.
Yep.
Castle King?
I was surprised that today there's no corporates in dryland farming, is that what you said?
Yeah.
In, in our region?
Yeah, yeah, no, they, they tend to buy the irrigated land because the income is more secure. You know, the, the income for an irrigated farm would be sort of, they still have a lot of up and downs. But ours can go wildly up or wildly down if it's a drought, you know, you're not making any money, you're not, you're losing money.
I understand, thank you and thank you, Brian.
Castle Moore?
And I did ask this question over the phone, Brian, but how many dollars an acre, or, which is one, it does it amount to? What's it going from, two?
Ah, my two highest value blocks, back towards the river a bit. Um, are currently six bucks fifty an acre I'm paying per year. Um, so that's about the jump to eight bucks an acre. So, that's equivalent to thirty dollars, thirty kilo per year if I had to put it to good use as opposed to, sorry, into the black hole. Because we're not, we're not seeing any, anything from the money we're spending or being charged. So, it's, it's a big imposition. If I was to lease that country as an investment, I might get fifty bucks an acre um for it. So, well over ten percent of that if I was to retire or as part of a portfolio or whatever. So, it's, it's a massive impost on, on what we're trying to do. Um, and it's year after year, and as Chris said, it's, it's gone up forty percent in the last three years. Like that's just ridiculous, especially when there is that three and a half percent fair go rate cap, the safe balance to put on. So, we're being very unfairly targeted.
So, what do you consider as a livable area, these guys, you know, said it was a green area, you know, six hundred and forty acres was a livable area. And that raised families, and then all of a sudden it was three to five thousand acres, what is it now, what do you consider as a livable area? Your mum and dad, kids, Tom?
Um, varies depending what stage of your career you're at. I guess Bill, um, there's people with two and a half, three thousand acres. Um, but they haven't got kids wanting to come home and carry on. Um, and they tend to be mid fifties onwards, so they're ticking along and that, they love the lifestyle and what they do. Love growing things, making stuff happen. Um. Yeah, so anywhere from, from that up to, we've got people up near Kulinon with thirty odd thousand acres, thirty five thousand acres. Um, by the same token, that's three or four members of the same family all in, in that, in that one big plot. Um, so yeah, that, that pure depends on, on the risk profile and the workload file they want to do. Yeah.
I, I'd say one fam, just one fam would need at least six thousand acres to, to have a prof- prof- profitable farm and perhaps buy the odd block if it.
That's a good sort of thinking point.
And with the opportunities, just wanting the kids to come home if that's what they wanted.
A- around us, we've, we've got some older farmers, as, as you mentioned, I'd only have two or three thousand acres and, you know, for your shape. But they're, they're not um looking to buy more land or they're not sort of dynamic farmers.
Well, they're probably, yeah, made money in the good times and they're enough expenses and kids.
And your debt profile too, like, so I've been going through the years, so I've got a three dollar debt load and. That's a choice we make to try and build up to a, a side where if I've got one, two or three kids that may want to come home. Um, yeah, so knowing that years ago, we, we went bloody hard while we were young and fit to, to try and make it happen. Um, sometimes I wonder if it's worth doing now, we just got to the end of cropping and we haven't slept a month and a half. And um, yeah, but they're the, they're the choices every individual family makes.
All right, well, sorry, Tessa? Um, I'm not sure who this question goes to, but how have the raw acre rates risen, what percentage over the last five years, as in comparison to other sectors?
Well, I only did the figures for three years.
Yeah.
But I, when you say other sectors, like.
Like you're talking about a retail property in Swan Hill or a residential or whatever?
We can't get any information like it, it'd be nice to, to get some information, you know, how much is a business in town? You know, the property worth and how much rates do they pay and what sort of profit do they generate out?
I think, Cassie, I have quite a question in a later time for us with the officers, until we get, have they, when we consider these submissions?
We, we've asked for that sort of information, but the profit isn't, so, so you can't say, well, a business that generates a similar profit. Say toward a dryland farm, what sort of the business is that in town? So that we could sort of compare property valuations. But I mean, we need property to farm, whereas say a lawyer's office in town, they're paying rates on a. You know, on, on an office block, but they'd be generating a lot more money than what we are. Their income would be consistent unlike ours, but we need farming land to farm, that's the nature of our business.
I, I could have twenty million dollars worth of land supposedly if I passed it in. And turn over maybe three, three and a half million a year, depending on seasons. Whereas, say, when I kind of start, I don't know what the property can be worth, a couple of million bucks for the sheds and stuff out the road there. They'd be turning over, you know, what, a hundred, hundred million a year. Um, they're only getting rated on that shop front, that's got absolutely nothing to do with your ability to pay or capacity to pay. Um, and yeah, as Chris said, our income is just so variable. Um, one year we could lose half a million bucks, the next year you make half a million bucks, just depends when, when it rains. And even last year, we were that close to dead crops because it hadn't rained much out our way until the middle of August. I've had crops start to die in the middle of August, then quick rain, we had a good season and. You can start looking, changing car out of that, but um, yeah. Before that, we were in all places.
Right, thanks Brian and Christine, I appreciate you coming in, as with the other, um, the ones that submitted, did come in. And also Andrew also made his submission, we'll take those into consideration and obviously um we'll get back to you at a June, sixth of June meeting. Um, and let you know what the result is here, so thank you very much for your time. We really do appreciate it, the fact that you made the effort to come in and make a response the first time in the budget, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, councillors, can I have the motion to resume sending orders? Thank you, Castle Moore, Senator Castle King, more in favour? Carrie? Um, obviously, just before I close the meeting, look, the, but uh rating is a very difficult area. Um, it's a difficult area, I think the state government are looking at a lot of different processes and different ways they can do this. But um we will definitely take into consideration the submissions that have been brought to our council, that's all we can do at this point in time. And um we take on, take notice of what the um submitters actually said, thank you again for that. Thanks to the staff and we'll be in touch with our finance people in the near future to find out what the result is as a result of these submissions. Thank you, that being said, we will close the meeting, this is an unscheduled meeting, only one matter on the agenda, so the meeting is closed at.